Good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for November 1st, 2022. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
Yes, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Core?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number three, agenda approval. Do we have a change to the agenda this evening?
We do, Madam Mayor. We need to add an executive session under RCW 4231101G to review the performance of a public employee, and that should take about 10 minutes.
All right. So, an agenda, excuse me, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda with that addition.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, Public Communications. The first item we have this evening is employee recognition. So each month here at the city, employees get together and they have the opportunity to nominate a fellow employee for the work that they are doing that meets the mission, vision, values, and goals of the city, whether it be in a special project or generally it is just in the performance of their daily duties and how they carry those out. So I am very, very pleased to announce that November 2022's Employee of the Month is Officer Corey Chapman. Corey Chapman is our, excuse me, our November Employee of the Month. He started working for the Police Department on May 18th, 2015, as an officer. He works to protect life and property, enforce laws and ordinances, and prevent and investigate crimes. Officer Chapman was nominated because during the week of April 16th, 2022, Officer Chapman was the sole officer responsible for addressing homeless issues in the city of Kent. There was also a scheduled student visit to an environmental project along the Green River on Friday, the 22nd. I remember that very, very clearly. We had several busloads of students coming from Kent Meridian High School to look at that environmental project. This had been a major homeless crime and public nuisance area located within King County jurisdiction. Officer Chapman was very familiar with it and jumped right into working the inherited King County portions of the cleanup. He made notification to the people on site as well as the unoccupied camps, which included offering help with Kent Human Services, Union Gospel Mission Salvation Army, and issuing Kent Emergency Resource Cards. He networked with Public Works and Parks to coordinate multiple machines, dumpsters, and personnel to clean up the large mess by Friday. He received many thanks, and in response to positive comments, Officer Chapman simply replied with a smile, happy to help. And I can absolutely attest to that. We had exactly that conversation as we were standing down there at that project area. And what this doesn't talk about is the great lengths that Officer Chapman went to for a couple of folks that were down there, making sure that the area was taken care of, and at the same time, the people that had been staying there were taken care of. So could not be more grateful. Corey continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate him as November's Employee of the Month. You all are very familiar with Officer Chapman. We've seen his amazing work on some body camera footage over the last couple of meetings, and the number of compliments that I have seen come through in people saying, you know what, that's exactly what we want our officers here in the city of Kent to be like, that compassion, at the same time, the accountability. So Officer Chapman, congratulations on being our November 2022 Employee of the Month. I'm going to slightly put you on the spot. Do you want to come up and say anything? Or Assistant Chief Hemmend, do you want to come up and say anything?
Okay.
First off, thank you. Proud to be up here. I appreciate the appreciation. I couldn't have done this all if it wasn't for the support of my wife who's in the crowd here, who hates the spotlight as much as I do, but I'm out here, so, yeah, happy to help and go to.
See? And I also, I will share another conversation that you and I had not too long ago as you were headed out for vacation, and if I remember correctly, it was also your birthday, right around the same time. And the conversation was, I'm worried because there's not going to be anybody here to take care of these things while I'm on vacation, but I'm building up vacation, I'm going to lose it, and I have to take it, and that's the kind of commitment, right? We want you to take your vacation because the work that you're doing here is complicated and it's hard, and we could not be more grateful. So thank you and congratulations.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And thank you for sharing him with us on a very regular basis. All right. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Michaud?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to pass along something that I heard during the last Human Services Commission meeting, and it came from UGM's Brian Chandler, who I think you know very well and work with a lot, and he said that our teams that work with the homeless population, that's you and your partner, were the best officers in King County. They were well-trained, the most helpful, caring, and he looks to you to train those other communities in the county, so.
Good news already.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Generally, when we present a proclamation, we have someone here to receive it. We were working with the Muckleshoot Tribe on having someone to come and receive this proclamation this evening, and scheduling didn't work out, but I did feel like it was important to read this at this council meeting. So it's a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is recognized annually to honor indigenous cultures, histories, traditions, art, and achievements, and whereas in the face of broken treaties, violent displacement, and genocide, Native Americans have persevered and continued with remarkable strength, resistance, resilience, and self-determination. And whereas Native Americans, including local Muckleshoot, Duwamish, and many other, have been protectors and stewards of natural resources and environment since time immemorial, and whereas the city of Kent values the many contributions made to society by Native people in technology, science, philosophy, the arts, and especially our local indigenous volunteers and leaders. And whereas the city of Kent recognizes that we must work to combat the impacts of discrimination and racist policies of Native people, past and present, and eliminate inequities stemming from colonization, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as Native American Indian Heritage Month in Kent, Washington, and encourage all residents, as well as our elected representatives, to recognize and commemorate the important contributions that Native American people have made to our country and our communities. So that it was important to recognize that and acknowledge the great working relationship that the city has, especially with the Muckleshoot Tribe, on our fisheries and waterways. So want to say thank you for that. All right. We are going to move on to the next item under Public Communications, and that is Community Events. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple things going on at Cecil Showred Center. The Thunderbird playing Prince George. Can you believe it's November 1st already? It's incredible. So they play today, right now, as we speak. We also have the Los Tegas reunion tour on Friday, November 4th. Thunderbird playing again at Portland on November 5th. The Wolf Hometown Holiday will be December 9th. Tacoma All-Stars Home Opener is Saturday, December 10th. We have the Galway Island Ruthless Tour on Friday, January 13th. And the Harling Gold Trotters, everybody familiar with them, they coming back on Sunday, January 22nd, and then we have the Awaken Music Festival on April 28th. Tickets on sale as we speak right now. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other community events? Councilmember Fincher?
Yeah.
All right. Look at that. All right. Throwing me for a loop this evening. Okay. We will move on to reports. As you have all heard me say many times, every person that sits up here on the dais works very hard, not only at the council meetings and committee meetings, but representing the city of Kent at the regional level. It is extremely important that Kent's voice is heard in all of those conversations, whether they be policy or funding, and without that representation, we would not see as many good things coming Kent's way or be a part of those conversations as we have seen, especially for the past several years. Couple of things from my report this evening. Tended, I'm the Vice Chair of Skip, South King County Housing and Homelessness Partnership. As many of you might be aware, our Executive Director, Angela Sanfilippo, is leaving us at the end of December, so we'll be starting an Executive Director search process here shortly. So we did work through some of the logistics on that. It's sad. Very good for Angela in the reasons why she's doing it, but it will leave a big, it will be leaving a big gap. So working on that. And we also talked about the legislative agenda for Skip, which is very reflective of where both the city of Kent and our surrounding cities in South County stand on housing issues. So happy to see those conversations move forward. We are going to be, housing is going to be a hot topic, as we'll be hearing here shortly during this next legislative session. In addition to that, just want to say thank you. We have had, I think, we're at about seven different neighborhoods that have participated in our Drinks in the Driveway series. So meeting with neighborhoods where they are, so literally standing in someone's driveway, neighbors have a chance to come, and we spend hour and a half or two just having conversations about what's on their mind. Chad Baron, our Public Works Director, Chief Padilla, Assistant Chief Kastner have joined us, and Rob Brown in those conversations, and I feel like they've been really productive, and we've had quite a few other neighbors reach out and want to know how they can be involved. We have our last one of the season next week. As you can imagine, it's starting to get a little chilly at 6 o'clock at night, and it's also starting to get dark. So we will be pushing pause on those events until next spring. Also want to say thank you to everyone that came out last night for our Haunted Boulevard. It's a cooperation with Kent Station. Councilmember Michaud, you were there with quite a trunk set up. It was pretty awesome. We had Economic and Community Development, our Parks Department, Communications Team, Police Department, Public Works was down there with a dump truck, lots of community members, and I have heard somewhere around 4,000 people at that event last night. So by the end, we ran out of candy and we were passing out Kent swag. So there's lots of little kids running around with slap bracelets and other things that we could find in the back of the van, but super successful event, and it was a lot of fun to see the trick-or-treaters out last night. So want to say thank you to Kent Station, all the folks that came out and participated, and all of the city teams that were there as well. With that, I'm going to look to my right to our Chief Administrative Officer, Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry. Just a quick reminder about the executive session. I failed to mention that there will be no action at the end of the executive session. Thank you, Kim. And my updates in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In our Operation Public Safety meeting, we took a lot of action based on a lot of hard work that had been done in the last, you know, three to six months. We adopted the Comprehensive Plan, the Camping Public Property Adoption, if we was able to do that, which also will be in our consent calendar night. We also looked at the impact fee for the Regional Prejudice Town Fire Authority, but also the Comprehensive Plan for the Auburn Kent Federality School District for 2023 to 2028. We also updated the school impact fee, tax code amendment, property tax, and then also our adoption of our 2023, 2024 Biden budget. Also recognize you during the Public Safety Meeting about bringing a flat budget, and the team working hard to really try to keep things together. And always the finance team have done a really phenomenal job of really putting this all together. So that's all I have, nothing but kudos. So thank you.
Nice.
I'm so sorry. I was looking at you to take charge.
Right, I'm like, I'm gonna just.
Okay, Councilmember Michaud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to hold off on my report until our next council meeting.
Okay. Councilwoman McCord?
I do not have anything to report. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Larmour?
I also have nothing to report as my committees are meeting this week.
All right. I know Councilwoman Troutner got a big report, so let's hear it.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to touch briefly on our RTC meeting that we had in the middle of October. I am Vice Chair of that meeting, and as I talked about in our last meeting, we voted the ordinance to continue the low-income fare for transit to $1, and that will take us through 2023. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Troutner. Councilwoman Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Or Mr. President, I guess. I have no report either, but I would like to say that tomorrow night, RFA is at 5:30, Station 78. Excuse me. We have two this month, November 16th also, same time, same place. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. Just the main thing I want to mention is with Mid Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, there was a report that we will have a new program in place that they're working up, and the project is pretty ingenious. It's going to let people go to school during their work hours, still get paid, and the goal is to increase the number of therapists. There's a severe shortage in the behavioral health field, and so this is a way to help people that are already with agencies help grow that number. So that is the main thing as far as KCD, Arts Commission, and Public Works. No meetings to report on since our last one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fincher. Madam Mayor, that ends our report.
Thank you, Council President. Item number six is a public hearing. We do not have one this evening. Item number seven is public comment. Kim, do we have any speakers signed up? I have one person signed up to speak, and that is TJ Peterson. All right. Mr. Peterson, before you start, let me give my little spiel here. Public comment period is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council or the mayor on issues that are related to the business of the city of Kent or agenda items council will consider at this meeting. Comments that do not relate to the business of the city are not permitted, and additionally, the state of Washington prohibits people from using public comments to support or oppose a ballot measure or candidate for office. We do limit comments to three minutes, and if you could please state your name and city of residence for the record, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President, councilors. Early day today, right on. You guys are burning through the agenda. I'd like to talk a little bit about in consent calendar, you're doing the camping orders tonight. Connected to that, Burien just recently enacted tenant protections. Six to one vote over in Burien. This was on October 24th. They also extended their Affordable Housing Demonstration Program. That's been doing some good work in Burien. They brought a Habitat to Humanity project to Burien. There's a company called EcoThrive. Limited equity affordable home ownership opportunities. They're bringing that to Burien. Tenant protections, move-in fees capped at one month, 180-day notice for an increase of over 10% rents. In the news, you might have heard of a company called RealPage. It's a kind of a cartel of property managers, and there's like 10 of the largest nationwide property management groups that are part of this organization. It's almost like a cartel, 20,000 small landlords. One of the leaders of this company said, with this process, you know, we'll take the empathy out of owning this business. And I mean, I talk about landlords, we talk about the homeless crisis, what's driving that, our rent increases, our zoning problems, our falling behind on housing opportunities for the growth that you guys want to see in Kent. King County has enacted tenant protections. Our neighboring cities have enacted tenant protections, some that exceed the state minimums. Give the renters in Kent the tools to fight for themselves against some of these big companies that are forming cartels, literally cartels. ProPublica did a nice story about this, colluding together to raise the rents maximums. They don't even care if they have empty tenant units because they're making so much money. I know Councilor Fincher, Councilor Larmour, Councilor Core have spoken about this before a couple of times over the years. You're talking about your legislative agenda this year to Olympia. You guys want housing, zoning to be in local control. You guys have to do something about this homeless crisis, the waterfall of people that are entering the streets. I know we can do this. You know, there's a lot of smart people here. Not all landlords are rent seekers, lack of a better term. Some actually build housing and manage it, and take care of the community and the people of the communities. I'm looking for a little bit of that leadership from the rest of my councilors, Councilor Thomas, Councilor Boyce, Councilor Troutner, Councilor Michaud. I know you all can get together and work on this issue and move us into the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, do we have anyone else signed up?
I do not.
All right. We'll move on to the Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar is a compilation of items that the council has worked through at the committee level. Had an opportunity to have conversation, ask questions, and receive presentations, and they've moved out of committee without controversy. This evening, we have items A through E. Sir, a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, item A through E. Is that good?
A motion to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. That brings us on to item number nine, Other Business. We have before you this evening our 2023 legislative agenda. Joining us this evening via Zoom is our lobbyist, Breonna Murray, from Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Good evening, Breonna.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here. I am going to share my screen, hopefully successfully, to bring up a PowerPoint presentation.
We can see it.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, well, Council, it is wonderful to be here this evening. As Mayor indicated, I'm Breonna Murray. I'm your contract lobbyist in Olympia. This evening, I am going to share with you an overview of what to expect this next legislative session, as well as review a draft 2023 legislative agenda for you all to provide feedback on, and with the hope that that draft agenda can be placed on your consent calendar for November 15. Starting first with an overview of what to expect this next session, I want to start with a reminder. The legislative session, the legislature operates on a two-year cycle, and so we are just beginning that cycle with January, in January of 2023. As it is the first year of that two-year biennium, it is scheduled to last 105 consecutive days, starting on January 9th and going through weekends and holidays. The 2023 legislature will be tasked with developing the state's budgets. You'll recall that there are three state budgets, an operating budget, which funds K through 12 operations, as well as all the state agencies, a capital budget, which funds bricks and mortar construction throughout the state, including community projects. This is a budget that Kent has historically benefited from greatly, and a transportation budget, which is funded with fuel tax revenues, and more recently, through Climate Commitment Act or CAPN Invest revenues. We have also, as a community, benefited greatly within that transportation budget. The state's fiscal year runs July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2025. The legislature will spend the 2023 session developing those three biennial budgets, and then in the 2024 session, they will be meeting to make amendments to the budgets that they developed this year. That means that this year is considered a budget year. It is the year to request funding. It's a funding year, and so those are all of the shorthand terms for how this upcoming session can be referred to. In addition to budget work, the legislature will consider and adopt many different policy bills. In a typical legislative session, we usually see a few thousand bills introduced into each chamber, and then about between 300 and 400 that get enacted into law. So we're expecting robust policy discussion on a variety of topics, ranging from housing to transportation to public safety, you name it, and I'm expecting the 2023 legislature to discuss it. A little bit of political context, as you are all probably very aware, one week from today is the November 8th elections. Those elections are going to be formative on what the upcoming legislature looks like In looking at August primary results, it indicates that Democrats are likely to maintain the majority in both the House of Representatives and the State Senate. However, there are a lot of factors that suggest that those However, there are a lot of factors that suggest that those August primary results may not be fully indicative of what we're going to see a week from today. So those election results will be very formative. Regardless of political party, we will see a lot of new faces in Olympia. There were over 25 new legislator, sorry, over 25 legislators that chose not to seek election to the reelection to the seat that they were sitting in, and so they're either pursuing, you know, House members pursuing a Senate seat, or pursuing other offices, or chose to retire altogether. So we will have 25 new legislators, and of course, many of those retirements did occur within Kent's legislative delegation, so we will have some new members representing the city of Kent. Once the elections are complete, each of the legislative caucuses will meet in late November, early December. They will each select their respective leadership positions, who's going to serve in what roles as far as Speaker, Majority Leader, Deputy Majority Leader, Whip, so on and so forth. They will also choose their committee chairs and who will serve on what committees. Each, every biennium, at the beginning of a biennium like this, they revisit what, even what committees exist. We oftentimes see emerging of various policy committees or separating out of policy committees based on political dynamic. So we're going to have some insights into committee structure and assignments in that late November, early December timeframe. So with all of that as context, I want to move into providing you a brief overview of your draft legislative, of a draft legislative agenda for your feedback and consideration. As we have done in the past, the draft agenda that is included in your materials divides our policy issues into two different components, top priority issues, and then policy statements. One thing that's really challenging to navigate through the legislative session is the sheer number of issues that the legislature is discussing, and the fact that so many of the bills, hundreds of bills, will have an access on city government, city operations, city business. We can't have a 15-page legislative agenda just right out of the gate. It would lack the focus, it would lack defined requests, and it would be really challenging for our legislators to digest and then advocate on our behalf for. So this structure pulls out top priority items that are really those items that we are asking our legislators to dedicate the bulk of their time and energy to advancing. Those items are also the items that I will spend the bulk of my time and energy advancing. Then in addition to that, we have a whole series of policy statements that speak to those hundreds of different bills that we'll see introduced, and express positions of support or oppose or closely monitoring those policy issues. We'll still be, I'll still be reporting on those policy issues as part of my weekly report. We'll still be signing in at public hearings associated with those policy statements. We may even still be testifying, but they don't quite rise to the level of being a top priority issue. In developing the draft legislative agenda that is in your materials, I sought feedback from all of the different city departments, followed up with several city departments to have further dialogue correspondence and question and answer back and forth to fully understand the items, took into account the political context and makeup of what we're anticipating to occur this next session, and then discussed that draft with the mayor's office. So the draft that I'm presenting this evening is really not coming from me, it is coming from all the city departments, and is what I present to you as being a good path forward for developing a successful legislative session or having a successful legislative session in 2023. So I'm going to review each of the top priority items and then briefly touch on a couple policy statements. So the first top priority item is around public safety. I think you all are likely aware that the Supreme Court issued a decision in the middle of the 2021 legislative session invalidating the statute that makes the possession of controlled substances a felony. The legislature responded quickly to that Supreme Court decision and enacted a temporary policy that states that if an officer can arrest for possession of controlled substances, you need to demonstrate that that individual has been diverted or referred to treatment programs at least twice, and then if that is demonstrated, an individual is arrested for a misdemeanor rather than a felony. That temporary policy expires in July of 2023, and we're fully anticipating the 2023 legislature to have a robust discussion on what an appropriate permanent policy looks like. The Kent Police Department, City Attorney's Office, and others provided feedback, and the legislative agenda before you outlines a statement where the city would ask the legislature, as it's forming that more permanent policy, to ensure that individuals are getting direct access into treatment. What is occurring now is individuals are being referred to treatment, but they're not actually taking the step of getting into treatment, and then arrests are also not occurring at a misdemeanor level. So the suggestion in the legislative agenda is to make possession of controlled substances an arrestable offense, however, it would not be prosecuted if treatment is completed by the individual, and that creates this direct connection to getting individuals into treatment. That's coupled with an increase, a statement of the city's support for increased treatment options to ensure that when individuals are wanting treatment, that those options are readily available and accessible. So that's the first top priority item. Moving on to the next top priority item, which is around illegal street racing. There are actually a coalition of cities. This is not just a Kent-only-driven item, but the cities of Tacoma and Des Moines and Pasco have all shared concerns about an increase in illegal street racing that's been occurring in the last two to three years. The Coalition of Cities is working to draft legislation for the 2023 session that would look at how to establish some consequences to promoting and engaging in illegal street racing that function as deterrent for illegal street racing occurring in the first place. So the proposal's focusing on the promotion of illegal street racing, individuals participating in illegal street racing, looking at how to seize street racing vehicles through impounded forfeiture authority, and how to appropriately prosecute accomplices with crime results from illegal street racing. The next top priority item is a capital funding request. You'll recall when I was mentioning the capital funding request, capital budget before, that I mentioned that many community projects are funded out of that budget. Each year, we tend to make some funding requests within that budget, and this is this year's request. It's a $2 million request to fund Phase 1 of the East Hill North Community Park. I think you are all familiar with the East Hill North Community Park. The city has recently conducted a significant amount of community engagement. The park is envisioned to be Kent's first green park, and if fully funded, all the amenities would include parking, utilities, restroom, shelter, a children's play area, and more. I will note that the city previously received some state funding through the capital budget for this park. We would be looking for this $2 million to be in addition to and to augment the state funding that has already been appropriated, and if the $2 million were appropriated, it would allow the project to proceed forward. The next top priority item is around transportation. You'll recall that last legislative session, the legislature approved the Move Ahead Washington Transportation Package that funded a whole series of projects over the next 16 years. The legislature identified which projects would be funded over the next 16 years, but didn't say when projects would receive funding in that 16-year timeframe. We were fortunate to have several of our projects included on the list that are going to receive funding through the package, including Meet Me on Meker, the 224th Street Corridor, Interurban Trail, as well as significant investments into State Route 167405 and the Fugitive Sound Gateway projects. However, the timing for those projects has not been determined. That's something that will be determined in the 2023 session. So the legislative agenda expresses a support for timely delivery of these projects, as well as increased funding to the city or cities as a whole to preserve and maintain the local transportation system, which was a component that was not funded in the Move Ahead Washington Package. The next and final top priority item is around modernization. It's two proposals, two specific legislative requests that are asking, that are asking the legislature to make changes to statutes to assist the city in going paperless or going digital. One of the things that the city learned during the pandemic was that there are some statutory requirements, or sorry, statutory changes that could be made that would increase the ability to do work more efficiently. The first of these is a legislative proposal that we actually initiated last session, had really good progress on, but in a short 60-day session couldn't get across the finish line. So optimistic about our chances of getting this accomplished this next session, and that is to remove the requirement that the city redact body-worn camera footage when it is being requested by an attorney that is receiving that same footage through the discovery process in an unreductive format. The second proposal is to clarify that ordinances can be considered effective when they're officially filed for use and examination by the public, when they are made available online, not when a paper copy is placed in a file at City Hall. So when an ordinance is posted online is then when it is officially filed for use and examination by the public, would be the statutory change. That is a brief summary of the top priority items. As I mentioned, the policy document includes many more policy statements of issues that we will engage on throughout the legislative process. I want to just note a few of those to call your, and call your attention to them. One, augment and builds on the public safety.
Brianna? Can I interrupt really quickly? Councilmember Corr, do you have a question on that first?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question on the modernization on the second item. Can you please explain that, Brianna? I did not understand that completely.
Yes, absolutely, and if it's still not clear after I've explained it, I will call on your city attorney to further elaborate. Under current law, ordinances are not effective until they are officially filed for use and examination by the public. And when you read the RCWs, what that means is it actually needs a hard copy, needs to be available for the public to access at City Hall. Where, this proposal would be to say when it is posted online and accessible to the public through the online system, that then it would be considered effective. And again, I defer to the city attorney to correct or modify that explanation.
I'm seeing Councilmember Corr shake her head, so.
Yeah, it came back to me. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Anderson.
Thank you, Brianna.
And I'll just briefly cover a couple of the items in the policy statements and then open it up for more feedback from council. So there, one of the items on the policy statement is a support for a new program through the Recreation and Conservation Office for parks maintenance. Parks throughout the state have really struggled to get adequate funding for maintenance and operations, so this is a statewide effort to increase funding for parks maintenance and operation through a grant program that would be administered through RCO. So it's a statement in expressing support for that. A second item, again, is augmenting our public safety statement, which is a statement in support of substance abuse treatment, specifically therapeutic courts, case management, and other similar programs. And then a statement in support of infrastructure funding. There are several programs, grant programs, that the city applies for each year, the Wash Stop Bike Ped Program, Safe Routes to Schools, and so on and so forth, and those programs need to be fully funded by the legislature in order for the city to receive the grants that it applies for. So a statement in support of those programs. That just gives you a flavor of the items on the policy document. We don't have time to go through all of the items on that policy document this evening, but that should give you a flavor of the items that are included on there, and certainly welcome any questions associated with those policy statements. So next steps. This evening, hoping to get your feedback on this draft agenda, which again was compiled with feedback from all the different city departments, and then the hope is this agenda can be approved in short order on your consent calendar on November 15th, and that will put us in good stead to be well-prepared for the beginning of the legislative session on January 8th. And with that, I'm happy to hear your feedback and answer any questions. I'm going to stop sharing so I can better see you all.
All right. Thank you, Brianna. Council President Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is also the first part of the modernization. I was going to ask the city attorney, how big is that? That seemed to be a big issue with the attorneys coming in, asking for the redacted body.
Oh, the body-worn camera? It is. So we deal with that, well, and Madam Clerk probably, did I do that right? Yep. Okay. Madam Clerk probably has more information to give you on that, but we have a lot of defense attorneys who cover all the bases. So they get information and discovery, but they also send in a public records request to us, and so we, under current law, have to spend a ton of time going through and redacting, well, Clerk's office does, redacting information and images that cannot be disclosed with a body camera by requirement of the current law. We are required to make those redactions before we can produce it. So doing this will save a lot of time in the Clerk's office moving forward.
I just want to make it while so. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Brianna, for this update. I kind of want to see housing as one of our priorities. I don't know if that's just me, but I think are we still going to talk about property tax increase as part of our priority, you know, the limitation?
The 1%.
1% limitation we have, is that going to be a priority, or is this something we will continue to work towards as we'll have to every year?
Brown, do you want to go ahead? I think that there's definitely conversation around the 1% cap, but I don't know where that stands this session.
Yeah, so, right, yeah, so the, there's, in the policy statements is an expression of support for the legislature lifting the 1% cap on property tax levy annual growth. And I know a lot of organizations are including that support item as part of their legislative agenda packages, but at this time, I've not heard of anyone who's picking up the mantle and really moving forward with that legislative proposal and leading the way. I will note that there are three different things that are occurring right now that could make that a very ripe conversation come the 2023 legislative session. The first is that the Washington State Tax Structure Workgroup has been meeting throughout the legislative interim. They've actually been meeting since 2017 to make recommendations to the legislature on how to make reforms to Washington State's tax code, and they are intending to recommend legislation to the 2023 legislature that's likely to include a recommendation to lift the 1% property tax cap. So that is one element that could elevate the issue. The second is that when the Washington State Legislature last revisited the state property tax code with the McCleary K-12 decision, they lifted the 1% cap on the state property tax levy. However, they only did that temporarily, and the 1% cap on the state property tax levy goes back into place this legislative session unless the legislature takes action to remove that 1% cap. When they made that decision for McCleary, local governments, including the city, were saying, hey, if you're going to lift the 1% cap on the state, you should also lift it for cities, but the legislature didn't do that at that time. So that could also open the door. And then the third is just that there's definitely been a lot of conversation around local government dialogue in relation to land use planning, and lifting the 1% property tax cap has come up as a way of incentivizing jurisdictions to increase density within their community. So I can see the conversation coming to a head in those three contexts, and our policy statement certainly has our indication of support for that, and so we would engage in those conversations as they come forward.
Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Brianna. I would also echo Councilmember Corr's concern. That was my first reaction, too, is that I felt like housing, I would like, I, well, I appreciate it's in the policy statement, it does feel like it should be a priority, especially for Kent. We know, my work in the Affordable Housing Committee, we know that eviction is one of the leading causes of homelessness, so I think some of like the expanded renter protection, expanded notification of the large rent increases would be warranted, and then we also know that Kent suffers more evictions than any other city in King County, so by a significant amount, I want to say it's like, it's, I want to say it's three times more evictions for Kent residents and other King County jurisdictions. So anything we can do to prioritize any state actions to help stabilize and prevent displacement would be appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. I just wanted to support my two council members with the suggestions they brought up. We know that we're still coming out of the pandemic. We know that we're still coming out of the pandemic. Some of the people have not done as well as others. Some are still struggling. And I think that, you know, knowing that we already had problems here in Kent, as Councilmember Larmour spoke, that we have more, more evictions than any other part of the county. I think that it's important that that be looked at. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Brianna? Okay, Brianna, I'm not seeing any. We can circle up in the next week.
Okay, that sounds great. I appreciate the feedback this evening and hopefully to have a next and close to final draft before you soon.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on in the agenda now to, oh, I'm sorry. There's an action requested on this item. Were we going to be adopting this evening or adopting next week? Our next meeting?
Well, it can just move to consent as it is unless there's changes that are made in the interim, so. Sorry. It can move to consent as it is. The plan was to have it on other business tonight and then move to consent. If there's going to be changes to the, to the agenda, then those changes should be, it would be helpful to determine them today.
This evening.
This evening, so that changes can appear and we can put it on consent, have it finalized for Brianna so she can start getting to work on this.
So we did hear from three council members on renter protections as wanting that as a party. So would you like Brianna to help propose legislation around that item? And then if that's the case, which one of the items on the agenda would we like to remove, given that her, the plate is very full for what Kent is sponsoring? Or are you asking for support for legislation that may come forward? And if that's the case, then we need to request some clarification from Brianna about what, what she knows is happening. There, they're considerably different things, a priority versus a policy support. So, and then we would need, we would need to see some consensus.
And I just want to add, from a staff perspective, when we have something listed as a priority, there is a tremendous amount of work and staff time that goes behind it. We, we have our staff members drafting legislation, attending meetings. So there's a lot of work that goes into the process of a priority. And then on the other side, on the policy document, we, we use that to determine whether or not we're going to go to Olympia and support things, whether we're going to send staff to speak in Olympia. So there's a difference between a priority versus a policy decision by the council. And I can tell you that those priority decisions are, they require an extensive amount of work, and that's why we have to limit them. It also causes an extensive amount of work for Brianna because she then is, needs to go out, develop relationships, and start to assess the landscape and do those kind of things. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that before you decide what category to put something like that in.
And I think in addition to that, work on finding a legislator to champion that policy after it's done. And so a lot of that work has been happening already at this point. So Councilmember Thomas, followed by Councilmember Michelle.
Madam Mayor, there is no motion on the floor at this time, is there?
No.
No, it's not.
Then I would move to accept the 2023 legislative agenda as presented.
Okay, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Councilmember Michelle, did you want to make comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Pat, for that clarification. So I just have questions for my fellow council members. I'm just wondering, I don't, I like everything that's on the priorities. So I'm just wondering, do you want to add to the housing section on the policy document? I'm just looking for some clarification, so I.
I would personally be satisfied if we could just add something to the housing in the policy section. I question our decision to prioritize some things over housing, but I would be satisfied if we would at least add eviction displacement efforts to the housing policy.
Do you have some language you would like to propose as an amendment to the document?
I would want to look to, I would have to look to legal to help with that. Brianna.
So I've got a, I've got a motion and a second on the floor. We will take, I'm looking to our Roberts Rules experts down here. So without an amendment to the motion, we will take a vote. If the vote passes, it stands. If the vote fails, then we will go back and make an addition.
Point of order. Is there an amendment then to the main motion on the floor?
I just asked, and at this point, we don't have an amendment.
Okay, so we're just going to vote on the main motion that I made at this point?
Yeah, clarifications.
Now, no amendments could be made after that.
That's exactly, correct.
Okay.
So now I've got, for comment, I've got Council President Boyce, followed by Councilmember Fincher, followed by Councilmember Core.
Okay.
So I just want some clarification. I'm not sure I'm following Councilmember Brenner, Core, and then Larmour. So are you saying for the rental protection, you want to add some addition to? I'm totally lost, so please help educate me again. I just want to make sure I understand what you're asking, please.
I don't want to be the one speaking for everybody, so.
My point of making a point was about, we, you know, our top priorities. I think we need to show it to our legislators and to our community that housing is an important priority for us. And that was, that was the point I was, I was making when I made, made that comment, that I would like to see that we are working towards making, you know, asking support from our state for more affordable housing options, more funding coming to local governments to support our efforts. And, you know, supporting our community members ourselves who are, you know, having to, you know, they're in crisis or supporting more dense housing. So it was more, my point was more of like, like an overall kind of a housing. But I think kind of from Councilmember Larmour and Councilmember Fincher's point, it came down to just, just the rent control piece. I was kind of looking at the whole overall picture of housing, that housing is important to Kent. And we can look at diverse bills and legislation that gets, you know, comes through in Olympia and how we can support that and how important it is for our city to make sure we support legislation that increases funding for our communities to have housing options and, you know, anything we can do to make it better.
That makes sense, thank you. But don't we, and there's already enough bills in Olympia today around affordable housing that they're working on. I mean, that will come back to Kent. I mean, I think there's a lot of stuff going on today.
We do have some, yeah, we do have some legislation that passed. But it was more of like, like when I made that point, it was like, you know, it should be one of our priorities. It's still like, yes, we got funding, but it's still on our, on our plate that we are still working towards it because our communities are still suffering. Yes, we have some funding, but we haven't really made any progress.
And with that said, I guess I will look to our attorney. So if there's always stuff already, bills that got passed and continue to be looked at around affordable housing, attainable housing in Olympia, what would we need to do as a staff? I mean, it is a priority, I think, for all of us on this council here, right? So, I mean, is there something different we need to do than I heard? We can adopt this as a policy versus a priority? Because there's a lot of stuff going on in Olympia around affordable housing, right?
Sure, yes. And so I'm going to probably look to the CAO too, if he has some more information to add in. But the difference that he was explaining about the policy statement is the policy statement is what's going to sort of direct what we sign in and support in Olympia, other bills that are going on, not ones that we necessarily are going to be fronting. And so there are provisions in the legislative document before you now at the bottom of page 44 that does outline some of those policy statements of what we will be supporting with respect to housing. So it seemed as though, again, just from what I've heard, it seems like some of this may address some of the concerns that were maybe raised. But, so from what is presented now to council, there are a number of policy statements that the city would be indicating it would be signing on and supporting.
Of affordable housing. So get back to, because I think what you said, I might agree with you. I think Councilmember Larmour and Fincher took it to another level. So I think what you're saying, I am okay with that, but I'm not too sure the other stuff I can follow, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm fine with the affordable housing tools and the skip housing. She mentioned also increasing density. So I think we need that to help with the housing. Although in talking to Union Gospel Mission and talking to CCS and others, even what we referred here, we know that we still need housing and it would fit under the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. We still need more housing in the 0 to 30 range. And talking to both of them, there are not the rooms or the houses, the space, the apartments, they are, they are not available. So they don't have the places to put the people. So we need more support from the state to help with that. And I do not see anything in here that's going to help the renters. So I still think that we need something to help the renters of Kent.
Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, so I have a question for Brianna. Brianna, pardon? Oh, she's gone. Oh, okay.
So my question again would be, is there a motion to amend the legislative agenda? If there's no motion, then we do have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the agenda.
I don't have prepared language, so.
Since I made the original motion, I would speak against this particular, although I have not heard an amendment yet. But there's sort of a notion on the floor that they are moving toward that direction. And I would be speaking against it. I think in this particular motion, with what we have on the floor, with what's been presented to us by Brianna, that's sufficient. Anything else, and there's nothing wrong with what you guys have said, but you've got separate legislators in the 33rd District, the 47th, that are very pro-Kent and know our particular needs, as well as the mayor talking to them. These are the people that can really put forth our needs. Is that the right word for it? Or our wants, desires, maybe that's better? For what we have in front of us. So in that respect, I would be speaking against it, even though it hasn't been even brought forth yet. So I don't know if, you know, someone is making an amendment down there? I don't know. Mayor, I'm asking for a clarification here.
Councilmember Larmour.
I do not have, I do not have time. Or you want me to write something out right now? I don't have language prepared. So I do not have an amendment.
So at this point, we've got a motion and a second on the floor with no amendment.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion? Councilmember Fincher, did you want to?
I was just going to point out that that's where we usually turn to legal for help with the verbiage.
So, so that's, and that's a good question. So the vote, we need to go through this motion process? And if the motion passes, then it stands. If the motion fails, then it would go back to, actually Brianna, to help work on.
And I call for the question.
Justing that. So, so motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Core.
Roll call.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll vote yea.
So I've got, I've got four, it's a four-three vote. The legislative agenda passes as written. Councilmembers, I will.
That's not right, is it?
We had yays. Kim, would you call the roll, please?
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Councilmember Troutner.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Michelle.
Nay.
Councilmember Larmour.
Nay.
Councilmember Core.
Yea.
Councilmember Fincher.
Nay.
Council President Boyce.
Aye.
That is a four-three vote in support of the legislative agenda as presented.
Excuse me, I thought I heard a four. Michelle, Councilmember Michelle, you were a no?
That is correct, Councilmember Thomas.
That's for the no's.
Could make us, Councilmember Core was a yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, though.
We have a four-three vote in support, as it was published. Hearing the concern with the housing issues, you have my commitment, and I'm going to speak on behalf of Pat, to work with Brianna to find places where we can support legislation regarding housing in this upcoming session.
Good, good.
Right. Moving on, we have no bids this evening, but we do have an executive session. We will be going into an executive session for approximately 10 minutes. There is no action following that. So if you are not here related to the executive session, if I could ask you to clear chambers, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
They can't add unless you add.
Excuse me, there was also the concern. Excuse me, there was also the concern.